Good morning. Good morning. We call the regular board meeting's order. Please join us as we look to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common sense. I think that was shit. Good morning, everyone. Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Harrington?
Here.
Mr. Merriehill?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Here.
Mr. Depot has been excused. Mr. Farabee?
Here.
Mr. Blades?
Present.
Mr. McNally?
Here.
Mr. Scazavala?
Here.
Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Pleady?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Marnell?
Here.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
President also.
Mr. Glandon?
I'm here.
And Mr. Preston?
Here.
Thank you. Now that there's a short timer, they're getting feisty after all those years. We have a guest today, Mr. Bernardi, the executive director of United Way. John, would you come forward?
John, sure, please. Are you describing one of them? Yeah. Go ahead with the watch. Good morning. And thank you for having me back here again this year. Thanks to Mr. Farabee for putting us on the agenda, and Mr. Palmer, and certainly Mr. Morrow for his continued friendship and leadership. My message is a little different this year. I'm not here to ask for anything, not a single thing, but instead to offer a myriad of resources to not only the county community and the county government and the county employees, but to all of you in your individual townships. Our organization, United Way of the Adirondack Region, represents a network of 41 partner agencies across the region. This network provided service to 80,000 people last year. That's half the population of the three-county region of Clinton, Essex, and Franklin. So our reach is tremendous. And my message to you today is to put us to work. We genuinely want to hear from you if you have needs in your township, whether it be employees or constituents, or friends, family members, neighbors. There's a great many needs in the region from a health and human service perspective. And we have, again, a very strong network. And if you contact us, you can count on the fact that you'll have our undivided attention, and we'll go to work for you. Mr. Scazavala has a need in his town, and he calls tomorrow, I guarantee you, you will get a response that will be useful in some manner. We can't necessarily meet everybody's needs immediately, but we have resources where we're able to refer people and connect people to the resources that they need. And we really want to be that resource for you. So I'm not here to ask for anything, but instead to encourage you to put us to work. I'll tell you a quick story. There was an older woman in Essex County last year, actually earlier this year. She had a significant medical need and a chronic illness that she was really struggling with. And she was faced with needing some medication that was critical to her recovery and her well-being. And she couldn't afford it. She was underinsured. So the cost, don't quote me, but I think it was going to be around $550 or $570 for this prescription that she needed. And without it, she was facing a significant issue. She was faced with making a choice, $550 or $570. She might have had to go without being able to pay her rent. She might have had to go without food and other critical, basic needs that some of us take for granted. Well, luckily, she got in touch with our office, and we were able to provide her with a prescription discount card through a partnership we have with a nonprofit organization called Family Wise. And she was able to get that prescription for $72 with the discount. It was a life changer for her. And she happened to live right here in Essex County. And since then, we've been able to connect her with the insurance and other resources that she needs to be able to continue to live independently. But that's just one story of something we were able to do. And by the way, this prescription discount card, I would encourage all of you to take advantage of it. If you're a public employee, you probably have pretty good health insurance. But there may be people in your town that are underinsured or uninsured. And there may be, again, friends, family members that can benefit from that. By the way, those cards are available in Monica Feely's office. We'll get more down here for you, Monica, so that they're available to people. But that's just one example of a partnership that we've grown throughout the region that is very useful for people. Another thing we're working on currently with Commissioner O'Neill and the other commissioners in Franklin, Commissioner Mulverhill, and in Clinton County, Commissioner Redden, all commissioners of departments of social services, they have a significant need for foster parents. It's almost a crisis. In some cases, kids are needing to be sent out of the county, sometimes out of the region due to emergency situations. And they've reached out to us to assist them with recruiting foster parents. So it's another initiative that we're getting involved in through our network and through our many contacts throughout the region. We're going to be able to recruit people to assist in that process. So again, another example of a need in the community and our being contacted and our being able to rise to that occasion. So we're looking forward to that work as well. If nothing else, we can do a great deal of information and referral. We have a system in place called 2-1-1, information and referral. It's a three-digit phone number, similar to 911, which you would call in a life-threatening situation. Well, 2-1-1 is available for non-life-threatening, but nonetheless important health and human service needs, anything from childcare to housing, transportation, mental health issues, and any number of other issues. That's another resource that we make available to the region. So all of you as town supervisors will hear individually from our office in the hopes that we might come down to your office and educate and inform your employees and your constituents and your, again, friends and neighbors. So if you haven't heard from our office, you will. And certainly, it's implied that we're seeking financial support so that we can turn those funds back around to assist the community in any number of resources. But that's not my message today. My message today, again, is to put us to work, and I mean that genuinely. We'd like to hear from you, and I guarantee that you'll get a positive response and we'll be able to assist you in some fashion. So Mike, thank you for setting up the video. I'm going to show you a short video, which I think is informative, and then I'd be happy to hear any questions, comments, or concerns.
The richness of our region is measured not by the wealth that's been given to it, but instead is measured by the quality of the people who have had the landscape. It's this extraordinary asset that sets our region apart. Whether we could be part of a organization that goes to the organization, that goes to the whole community of Atlanta. I believe someone's reading that because I can't do what I say or what I write. There were problems that came out here and started believing. I came to my room, I didn't know what to say, and I tried to apologize. Since I went to college, I didn't talk with them. Then I found out I was two hours. These people should have gone to work. I don't feel that I walk the border, but United Way, we feel that they support local community and they love the neighborhood. There are about 30 people here that tell that they need to find themselves in a particular situation, about 85 to 90 percent on the basis to know that this community program will provide you with an ideal place. I think it's a tremendous way to give it back to the community. We feel that the United Way is certainly making a difference in this community, helping our whole way. And sometimes you don't see the effect of it, maybe you don't have to go far to see the effect that United Way has. It's just very exciting to see that.
Well, I know there's a particular part of song and chorus. I don't like it because I know that it's spread out everywhere. I don't have a way to destroy the relationship that's there. I know that a lot of people are there, a lot of citizens are far away. And I know that a lot of things are spread out to help a very broad cross-section of the population, people that are actually that are really helping.
BTS is a staffing company. We coach people with opportunities. My office does, it goes to 3000. They work with so many different agencies and see how some are wide-ranging people. And I love it. The United States of Oklahoma, there's so many different organizations in the community. It's great that people are giving opportunities, going to organizations for the communities that are changing and that's a good organization. And it's something personal. And 24/22, we're trying to bring 90 million people. And we believe that as a whole, that it's a all about the kids that they come on to our table. My office has a company that goes out and goes out.
I think the people that sort of, you know, go on and do what I do, it's a little bit more of a business than a record. You certainly support all the parts of it, but then it all goes with the United Way that's spent here. In these districts in our four counties that we have waited, we've allowed 3,000 boards across the whole region. I've been here 13 years, and this has seen some phenomenal changes across the region. The healthcare system has become more and more of a force and more active. We've added a lot of services here that really needs to be promoted, so this is not a new area. They have our, they have our best healthcare organization. And now our department has a facility, which is really all about the way we're more coordinated and more, I've seen the United Way have happened in so many different ways, with our medical department, many patients that we could identify, or we need something from a social services standpoint, that we contacted United Way, so that they're ready to access services that helps them create a comfortable home.
I think that's why this is what United Way, because we live here, and we live here. So we figured that we should do our best to save this community at a place where it can be managed. And United Way is there with us, so we can make sure that we can help. The thing that I love from you is that we see your staff, and that's why they're there. And that's why they're there to make sure that any difficulties we have to face, we should just go home with that. That's what we do every week. It's what many, many of our colleagues do for the region.
We work through the schools, but they don't work on the children's level, and they don't ask. It's like several chapters that are still running out there, totally set up the kids in the school area, on these households that are living under the federal home.
And how many children, that's my concern, is that the children are being fed. And that's a real necessity, right?
The high school district was one of the biggest schools to receive a lesson that communities weren't to be able to send students home, whether it's somebody who are moving in, or families who are out of time, for students who may not be able to focus their school day. They really have that, but just wasn't enough. They really didn't have that, but just wasn't enough. The back-up program is a way that United Way supports us, and we help all of these.
I think we're very much appreciative, in a beautiful way, to reflect people's lives in a positive fashion, and demonstrate that it's successful over a long time. And that's what we're saying to you guys.
We don't have to be able to give a lot for any of these events.
A dollar, a paycheck, in the end, really, really helps out. And everything that you contribute for the typical, and especially...
That's what I thought, and I think that's the bottom line. So we've seen the United Way agencies, because it's a big house in those hills, we had a member that was raised in the face.
The giving that government organizations, businesses, and individuals make. And then you go on the other side of it, and you see the benefits of that giving through our partner agencies, through the collaboration, the habit organizations, through our volunteers. I don't think it's unreasonable to say that the United Way affects and makes a difference in everyone's life and our vision.
I'd be happy to hear any questions, comments, or concerns, knowing my good friend, Mr. Morrow, as well as I do. I'm certain that he probably has a comment or two before he does that. I just want to thank Monica, too. Monica has been really helpful over the years, not just in helping us raise money here in Essex County, but also in linking people with the resources that they need. So she's been a wonderful partner. And of course, Jerry's a great friend and supporter, a member of our board, past campaign chair, and a real champion of our mission. So thank you, Jerry, as well.
You're very welcome.
Anything for John, any comments, questions? Jerry?
Like he said, I cannot say something. Since John's not here asking for any financial help, I guess I'll have to do it. I didn't realize it was going to be good cop, bad cop today. But to help these partner agencies, that's what our campaign goal's for. And we do need to raise funds, and it's all voluntary. And we have a large campaign team that goes around and does all presentations. Clint asks us in Franklin County, they do not get paid, they don't even get mileage, but they're willing to go to any town or any place that you need us to go. They want to do presentations. So if you would like to do a presentation in your town at any time at all, and there's one number you need to take with you today, you don't have to worry about all the partner agency's number and who do you match up with to get these, to help your constituents. I know I have people come into my office every now and then that need something that they don't want to work the system. I hear this all the time, well, most people know how to work the system. These people do not. I hate the phrase "working poor," but that's what it is. They're the people that want just to get help, to get through their tough time. And so what I do, and take this number down, 563-0028, that's the United Way office. Just call the United Way, they have a wonderful staff up there, and they will get you the information, like John said earlier, of what agency, these partner agencies, that have to be contacted. So help us, help the people in our tri-county area, and please, like you heard Sheriff from Franklin County said, even a dollar a week helps out, anything helps out. But if you get these presentations, you'll see in your towns how people react. They're really, really caring. They're caring people. And I want to thank John for coming here today. And I want to thank his staff for reminding him to.
And John, you know, the board as well, you know, we're always happy to see you come, and you're a great force, and you're a great promoter of United Way, and all the great work that they do for our constituents in Essex County. So, you know, again, we thank you, and again, we'd like to thank our supervisor, Morrow, for being the face of Essex County that's out there promoting us. Jerry, thank you. John, thank you very well. We appreciate it.
And thank you, Mr. Farabee. We've done some work together over the years, and I appreciate that very much. And I appreciate your welcoming me today, and Mr. Palmer, you as well, and all of you. Call us, we're ready to go to work. And if you ever have any questions, comments, or concerns, please feel free to reach out. We'll do our best to make sure that you have up-to-date and accurate information.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Nothing else? Mr. Connell, sure.
If I could have just a second, I would like to introduce a friend and colleague. He served on the village board in the town of Westport for many, many years till the village dissolved. And then he came on the town board. I'm pleased to say he served as my deputy supervisor for 12 years until he decided to become justice in the town of Westport. He's our supervisor-elect, Michael Ike Piler. Ike, would you please stand up and be recognized?
Thank you, Dan, and we welcome Ike, because I think most of us probably know Ike, and we look forward to working with you. Mr. Tanner?
As long as he started the process, my deputy is here, and supervisor-elect Wester Miga from the town of Nookham.
Same for you, Wes. We're looking forward to working with you. You guys got some big shoes to fill, that's for sure. Anything else? Nothing else, we want a resolution.
Resolution number 305, authorizing appointments to boards, committees, and/or councils.
Moved by Mr. Cannon, seconded by Mr. Merriehill. Comments or questions? Being none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Please, all opposed.
Resolution 308, accepting, adopting, and placing on fire policies, plans, procedures, any annual reports?
Moved by Mr. Connell, second. By Mr. Gilliland. Comments or questions? Being none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Carries.
Resolution number 309, authorizing the purchasing agent to award contract to Luck Brothers Incorporated for the replacement of the signed Pond Road Bridge over Millbrook in the amount of $1,108,003.09 from budgeted funds, and further authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract in this regard.
Moved by Mr. Moore, second. Mr. Scazavala, Mr. Marnell. Comments or questions? Being none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Carries.
Resolution number 309, authorizing the purchasing agent to award contract to Luck Brothers Incorporated for the replacement of the signed Pond Road Bridge over Millbrook in the amount of $1,108,003.09 from budgeted funds, and further authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract in this regard.
Moved by Mr. Moore, second. Mr. Scazavala, Mr. Marnell. Comments or questions? Being none, all in favor?
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merriehill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot has been excused.
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glandon?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution number 310, authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract amendment to the AES Northeast P L L C contract for engineering services in preparation of environmental review documents as relates to the Lobdell Lane Bridge reconstruction project in the amount of $10,000, which funds are to come from FEMA funds.
Moved by Mr. Morrow, second. Moved by Mr. Marnell. Comments or questions? Being none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Carries.
Resolution number 311, authorizing the county...
Excuse me, Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
We have more than one bridge that's going to be reconstructed one year. Could we put it engineered together and bid it out, bid both units out at the same time?
We bid out for engineering services so that we have them on contract, and we know what the rates are going to be for some of these ahead of time.
One bridge at a time, right? Pardon? We only engineer one bridge at a time, but we'd all run those three bridges.
Well, that's what, and actually, that's a good point. Well, we did it in the, one of the changes that we did in the 2016 budget is that we increased the engineering budget to 175,000, I think it was, so that we could plan ahead for these bridges by getting the engineering work done ahead of time.
Okay. Resolution 311, authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract amendment to the AES Northeast P L L C contract for engineering services in preparation of environmental review documents as relates to the Lobdell Lane Bridge reconstruction project in the amount of $10,000, which funds are to come from FEMA funds.
Moved by Mr. Morrow, second. Moved by Mr. Whitson. Comments or questions? If there are none, we'll call both, please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merriehill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot has been excused.
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glandon?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution 310, authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract amendment to the Shoder Rivers Associate Contract for Engineering Services as it relates to the Lobdell Lane Bridge Reconstruction Project in the amount of $63,200, which funds are to come from FEMA funds.
Moved by Mr. Morrow, Mr. Morrow, second. Moved by Mr. Marnell. Comments or questions? None, all in favor?
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merriehill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot has been excused.
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glandon?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution 311, authorizing the county...
Excuse me, Mr. Marnell?
Yes. Question. We have more than one bridge that's going to be reconstructed one year. Could we put it engineered together and bid it out, bid both units out at the same time?
We bid out for engineering services so that we have them on contract, and we know what the rates are going to be for some of these ahead of time.
Do one bridge at a time, right?
Pardon?
We only engineer one bridge at a time, but we'd all run those three bridges.
Well, that's what, and actually, that's a good point. Well, we did it in the, one of the changes that we did in the 2016 budget is that we increased the engineering budget to 175,000, I think it was, so that we could plan ahead for these bridges by getting the engineering work done ahead of time.
Okay. Resolution 311, authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract amendment to the AES Northeast P L L C contract for engineering services in preparation of environmental review documents as relates to the Lobdell Lane Bridge reconstruction project in the amount of $10,000, which funds are to come from FEMA funds.
Moved by Mr. Morrow, second. Moved by Mr. Whitson. Comments or questions? If there are none, we'll call both, please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merriehill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot has been excused.
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scazavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glandon?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
The resolution carries. Resolution 312, authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract amendment to the Dente Engineering Contract for Engineering Services, including performing subsurface investigations and performing a geotechnical engineering report as it relates to the Lobdell Lane Bridge Reconstruction Project in the amount of $9,612.50, which funds are to come from the FEMA funds.
increased the engineering budget to 175,000, I think it was, so that we could plan ahead for these bridges by getting the engineering work done ahead of time.
Resolution 311, authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract amendment to the AES Northeast P L L C contract for engineering services in preparation of environmental review documents as it relates to the Lobdell Lane Bridge reconstruction project in the amount of $10,000, which funds are to come from FEMA funds.
Moved by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Whitson. Comments or questions? There are none, all in favor?
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Farabee?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 312, requesting the New York State Department of Transportation to review and potentially reduce the posted speed limit on County Route 26, Bear Cup Road in the town of North Alba.
Moved by Mr. Pleady, second by Mr. Whitson. Comments or questions? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Thank you.
Resolution 315, authorizing the purchasing agent to award contract to John W. Sheehan and Sons in the amount not to exceed 25,000 to relocate an existing water line on Ravensway in the town of North Alba from budgeted funds, and further authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract in this regard.
Moved by Mr. Pleady, second by Mr. Glorland. Comments or questions? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Thank you.
Resolution 315, authorizing the purchasing agent to award contract to John W. Sheehan and Sons in the amount not to exceed 25,000 to relocate an existing water line on Ravensway in the town of North Alba from budgeted funds, and further authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract in this regard.
Moved by Mr. Pleady, second by Mr. Glorland. Comments or questions? Being none, all in favor?
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Farabee?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 316, establishing that Essex County will no longer board horses at the Essex County Fairgrounds on a long-term permanent basis effective February 1st, 2016, and further authorizing the county attorney to terminate the tenancy of Donald McQueen as of December 31st, 2015.
Moved by Mr. Preston, second by Mr. Moore. Comments or questions? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Thank you.
317, authorizing payment to Noemen for 2016 retirement drug subsidy attestation in the amount of $4,000.
Moved by Mr. Connell, second by Mr. Cannon. Comments or questions? None, all in favor?
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Farabee?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 318, authorizing an amendment to the Essex County Policy Manual, Section 8, employee leave time benefits, adding new Section 8.12.
Moved by Mr. Cannon, second by Mr. Moore. Comments or questions? None, all in favor?
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Farabee?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 320, authorizing the reappointment of Monica Feely as Essex County Personnel Officer for a period of six years effective January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, and that should be 2012.
Moved by Mr. Glorland, second. Mr. Marnell.
2022.
It should be 2021, I'm sorry, what did I say, 12? Sorry, 2021.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, just, where's the six years come from? We've made appointments for all sorts of different years, why is this a six years? It's a statutory requirement for personnel officers, or the term of office is always six years. Okay, thank you. And just for your information, the salary is $64,509.85. $64,509.85.
Comments or questions? None, all in favor?
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Farabee?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 321, authorizing the levy of charge backs.
Moved by Mr. Casavala, second by Mr. Moore.
$32,000 in the line, and I'll speak for the service well, I think. It's being adjusted as we speak by the state of New York. I don't know if we don't write a check, I assume they would put that on next year's levy, except that what this is all about basically, be a charge back on the 2016 row, right? Right. So, I don't know if we get the authorization to check, how we undo this amount, but we need to do that at some point. Maybe we can offer Mike courtesy as large as to talk about.
Mike, do I talk to, uh, Paul?
Yes, you do.
Mike, come on up.
We've been in touch with them too, as you well know, and talked to them several times. One thing we can do is remove it from this list, and if it doesn't come to fruition, it's just going to end up carrying on as a as a due-to from the town, and we'd have to bill it next year, or at some point in the future. But it might be advisable to remove it, and then if it doesn't come out, it's still going to be owed to the county at some point.
I remove an amendment, Mr. Chairman, to remove the document, Mr. Jerry.
Twelve, eleven.
Yes, you do.
Second. Steve, now the resolution as amended. What do we remove? Do you want to go?
No.
It's like, Mr. Steve. I read Minerva End. Across the board.
I'm clear on it, but it will take an adjustment to our levy. So, I have to, I'll get Linda to work that number out.
We can still need a mover for the resolution as amended.
Our levy is, remember who Dan?
It becomes a charge against our levy. Yeah, so then it gets, if you're going to remove it, then it becomes a reduction.
We're going to screw it, will you?
Um, I don't know, but we'll sort it out.
And the amendment is, the resolution as amended, moved by Mr. Maryhill, second by Mr. Casavala. Comments or questions on that? Being none, all in favor?
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Farabee?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 322, authorizing payment to Twin State Technologies in the amount of $16,656 for upgrade to the voicemail system at the Essex County Government Center and Public Safety Building from budgeted funds.
Moved by Mr. Cannon, second by Mr. Moore. Comments or questions? Being none, all in favor?
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Farabee?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glorland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution 323, of congratulations to Susan Topp's Real Property Tax Services Office for 30 years of dedicated service.
Moved by Mr. Morrow.
324, of congratulations to the Taconroga Central School Boys varsity football team for winning the 2015 New York State Public High School Athletic Association Class D Regional Championship.
Moved by Mr. Marnell.
Resolution 325, authorizing a five-year agreement between the county of Monroe and Essex County relative to Monroe County Sheriff providing security services for Essex County at the Rochester Psychiatric Center unit in the amount of $140 per day in May for the term January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2020, and authorizing the county chairperson and/or county manager to execute the same.
Moved by Mr. Gardner. Second. Mr. Marnell. Comments or questions? None, all in favor?
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glouland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number three twenty-six authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute a contract amendment to the Atlantic Testing Lavatories contract for hazardous materials survey services at the Essex County Fish Hatchery and in amount not to exceed thirteen thousand with such funds to come from Fish Hatchery Repair Reserve Fund.
Goodbye, Mr. Harrington. Mr. Connell. Comments or questions?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pallidi?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glouland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number three twenty-seven authorizing an agreement with the Town of Crown Point to proceed with a hydro geological study on the Essex County Fish Hatchery property as part of the Town of Crown Point's due diligence dealing with the town's current water system reconstruction under such terms and conditions as deemed appropriate by the county attorney and further authorizing the county chairperson and/or county manager to execute the same.
Goodbye, Mr. Harrington. Second, Mr. Moore. Comments or questions? None, all votes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala? Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pallidi?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell? Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glouland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Resolution number three twenty-eight of appreciation to the Canadian Pacific Railroad Holiday Train.
Goodbye, Mr. Skozavala and Mr. Grinnell. Second.
Okay, we're into the packet.
Any resolutions on the floor? Mr. Connell.
Resolution of appreciations to Elaine Atkins who was will be retiring as a town of Mariah Town Clerk after many, many years of service. She's done a great job for not only our constituents but people from surrounding areas of Essex County.
Yes, you do.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Grinnell.
Oh, yes. Resolution of congratulations to the Taconooga Boys Football Team for their performance at the New York State High School Class D Championship Game in Syracuse. It was probably the best athletic event I have ever attended. It was decided in the last thirty-nine seconds. Tie came up on the short end, but can stand very proud for the way they represented Essex County and the people of Taconooga.
All votes on the floor.
Yes, you do.
Second. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, since we did one for the holiday train, I think it'd be proper to move a resolution of appreciation. It's a joint effort for the Toys for Tots train that came through on Sunday. It's a joint effort from CP Rail, by CP Rail, Amtrak, and the Marine Corps that stopped in Mariah also and stopped in the Town of Chesterfield at the Port Cat Station and on their way to Plasburg and Ralph's Point, Champlain. And this brought a handoff toys at the train, plus they gave toys to give out later on. And I know in Chesterfield, we had over three hundred participate there on Sunday. It was very good, and we appreciate that.
Here you have twelve votes on the floor.
Yes, you do.
Second.
Second.
Any further resolutions from the floor? Eight, nine. Yeah, I'm pretty much ready just for my talk. We're gonna move into budget discussion now. Okay, Dan, we're gonna turn this over to Dan and discuss budget.
Just for your information, that chargeback removal that was done in that resolution, and Linda can quite better explain this, but it does not affect our levy. It affects our tax cap calculation because we do have to use that number with our tax cap calculation. But it's not a revenue to our budget, it's a receivable. So that won't change the levy as it was presented under tentative, but it does change how the receivable is accepted or handled within the course of the budget itself. So in terms of the tentative budget, we were at seven point nine nine, or basically eight percent as an increase to the levy with a tax rate of three dollars and twenty-three cents. Now, the discussion that was held at the public hearing or immediately following the public hearing was that we were going to make the following adjustments. We were gonna do that retirement adjustment, which was one hundred and forty-four thousand, six sixty-seven. The radio maintenance contract, which was gonna be absorbed by the state police at least for the next four or five years, would be a hundred and eighty thousand dollar reduction. We removed that thirty-five thousand dollar tractor that was within the equipment list. And what I, what that leaves you at in terms of the budget is, that would've left you at six point two percent on the levy with a tax rate of three dollars and seventeen cents. Well, basically rounds to three dollars and eighteen cents per thousand. And one of the other areas that I think we need to talk about that we did not talk about up to this point is the contract agencies. I did provide you with a list on your desk of the contract agencies and their request. Now, what Linda and I have done since two thousand and eight really is we've let the board decide on those contract agencies. It's the request that they put in is what we move through to the tentative budget. If you wanna make adjustments to those, then this is the time that you would do that, and we can go through that list. But just for the sake of argument, if you went through that list and if you removed approximately twenty thousand, that would reduce your increase to six point one percent on the levy. And it would take your tax rate down to three dollars and seventeen cents, just a half a cent, really. Just for your information so you understand, in order to move the tax rate one penny, you basically have to cut sixty-seven thousand out of the budget. So for the sake of argument, if you said you wanted to reduce the tax rate by ten cents, you would have to reduce the budget by six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that's basically sixty-seven thousand is the number that moves the tax rate a penny in terms of that. So I don't know if there were, the other thing that we talked about in terms of relations to the budget was potentially the blacktop. I did not recommend that, I did not put it in there, but there was a hundred thousand additional added into the two thousand and sixteen budget for blacktop. I felt based upon the amount of work that the DPW has done, thirty miles of county road and seventeen miles of town road, that if we give them the blacktop, they'll probably put it down. So in that sense, I felt like it was worth leaving within the tentative budget. However, if you did take the hundred thousand out of blacktop, that would drop your tax rate to five point six percent increase. And, I mean, your percentage increase to five point six, and your tax rate would be three dollars and sixteen cents again, just over a penny. Sixty-seven thousand required to move that tax rate a penny, so that's what the hundred thousand would do for you. I don't recommend it, but that's, you know, that's entirely up to you guys. The paver is not in the budget, we removed that equipment line, and we're talking about doing the V A N in two thousand and sixteen for those equipment purchases.
So in sixteen, it's possible that we will be getting a paver?
Oh, yeah, the intent was that, what we've done on the equipment in the past is we've taken what was essentially a large amount of the equipment and did a five-year band and paid for them over a five-year period. And the last five-year period of V A N for equipment ends in two thousand and fifteen, so you would be starting a new five-year band period for equipment, which would mean that you would have the budget for that band payment in two thousand and seventeen's budget.
So if we have a new paver, we should have a paver.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And just, Mike, I know Mike called me in reference to leasing or renting a paver during the busy season. Chris did check on that, it's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand to lease it for the period in which we would need it, the season that we do our paving. Chris's feeling is that we typically get ten years out of a new paver. So if you in fact didn't buy a paver and leased over that same ten-year period, it potentially could cost you one point two million for a paver. You can buy a new paver for five hundred thousand, so Chris's recommendation was to stay with the purchase of the paver as opposed to leasing or renting.
Mr. Moore?
Dan, which, the retirement that you were gonna save at a hundred and forty thousand, whether it was something like that, that's permanent?
Yeah, that will, we actually, a hundred and forty-four thousand that will not come back to us. They waived that one-tenth payment under the authorization of the retirement for two thousand and, well, thirteen, is that the years?
Uh, well, it was four fifteen, since we didn't amortize the retirement, we don't have to pay the installment payment that I budgeted in two thousand and sixteen, so we could take that out. I didn't realize that when we filed the tentative, we paid the full amount of retirement, so we didn't amortize, so there's no scheduled payment, so we can take that.
So that will not, so those monies that, I don't know, total, two or three hundred thousand dollars, including the radio budget and I think the tractor or whatever it was for thirty-five are pretty much not recurring, and that would get us down to six-two, and we won't see them again. That's correct.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Marnell?
Yeah, I would like to get an RFP or a bid on a lease, because it seems like a hundred and twenty-five thousand out of five hundred thousand dollar machine is high. I mean, if you ask somebody, they could give you a price, but I mean, I know contractors will lease machines. If they say you can get ten years out of it, I mean, they lease them and sell them or release them, but to get a firm price on a lease.
Okay, yeah, that's something that we can do, I mean, it's not, right now, if you decide on this budget, it has nothing to do right now with the blacktop machine or the paver because it's not within the two thousand and sixteen budget. It is a discussion that will occur in January as to what you would want to include within those budget, or within that equipment purchase. And Chris and Jim certainly can, we can talk about doing a RFP for lease of a paving machine. But again, today, that won't matter because it does not affect your two thousand and sixteen budget the way it's currently construed.
Mr. Dan?
Well, it was suggested to me along these same lines that when you've got a price of blacktop as low as it is, you should be doing more paving, not less. And that has some logic in my mind that you should take advantage of the price of blacktop right now and do all the paving you need to get done as quickly as you can. That's my own thinking.
And I tend to agree with that, I think that's, again, I tell you, there's not many counties that pave the amount of miles that Essex County does. I mean, you can, not picking on anybody, but you can see the difference between the line going from Warren County to Essex County. So that's where we are in terms of changes, I don't know if there's other things that the members of the board wanna consider. Like I say, any cut that does occur, you know, if you're gonna move the tax rate at all, it does take sixty-seven thousand.
On the contract agencies, the one that stands out is the Adirondack Regional Airport. I mean, that's a significant increase, I'm just curious as to what was their reasoning or justification for it? They really didn't give us one, did they, Linda, or?
They just said because we cut them back, you know, every year, you know, it's just, they did have, when I looked at their budget, they had a reduction in a couple of areas of their revenue, but they said that, I think Franklin County gives them twenty-five thousand too, so that's what they requested for months.
Well, you know, the truth is, we didn't cut them back, they never, they never requested funding two years ago, I believe, Dan, you can verify that?
Two thousand and fourteen, they didn't request funding, two thousand and thirteen, both of those years, I think they didn't request funding.
Yeah, so that's not really accurate, I mean.
Yeah, so in two thousand and fifteen, they requested, we approved five thousand two fifteen, I think they requested seventy-two hundred, that's what they were in two thousand and twelve. But their request for this year is twenty-five thousand, which is nineteen thousand, seven eighty-five over two thousand and fifteen's amount.
Mr. Preston?
Are we open to making motions?
Sure. Before we do that, can we do the first motion in the packet which actually accepts the tentative budget subject to amendment? So this board is accepting that tentative budget that's subject to these amendments that we'll do afterwards.
Resolution accepting the two thousand and sixteen tentative county budget subject to amendment and final adoption of the two thousand and sixteen Essex County budget.
Goodbye, Mr. Skozavala. Second. Mr. Moore? Comments or questions on that?
Is there a roll call, Dean?
No. All favor?
I oppose.
Carry. Okay, now I would do all these amendments at once. Randy, have you looked in the packet, are there any other, any of the amendments in the packet, or you just wanna?
I just, I just wanna get the process moving, and if it flies, it flies, if it doesn't, I'll sleep tonight. I would like to put forward a motion that we keep the contract agencies at the two thousand and fifteen amount. And my reasoning for that is, I sat in on a great deal of the budget meetings here, and our own people were asked to consolidate, to cut back, reduce their requests. And as far as the contract agencies, all they did here was put in a request, and I just think if we were at a tax increase of two or three percent, I probably could go along with what they've asked for. But seeing as how we're at six point two, I still think we need to continue to tighten the belt. So having said that, I make a motion that we keep the contract agencies at the two thousand and fifteen request.
Second for that, made by Mr. Skozavala and Mr. Grinnell. So, Mr. Cannon?
I know that I'm standing alone here, but I'm gonna go on record as being opposed to the C E F library budget in total. The bookmobile no longer visits my little community, and it's a protest vote. I know you're gonna vote on these all at once, so it won't mean anything, but I'm on record as you.
Thank you. My resolution on the floor, Mr. Grinnell, or Mr. Glouland?
Sorry, sir. I'm gonna miss you.
I'm not, I mean, I am, but.
I, surprisingly, I'm gonna agree with Mr. Preston on this one. But with one proviso on that, there were contract agencies that did come to these meetings, and we're here, ready to speak, or did actually speak, come and speak. Others, some with big increases, made no noise except for wanting a check.
Mr. Merrihue?
And, you know, I don't wanna pick and choose a lot, my only comment would be it is infinitesimal increase for literacy volunteers. I can't think of a better program to be able to fund mostly with volunteers and things like that. That would be the only one I would ask for an exclusion. It's a twenty-eight hundred dollar increase from last year, but that's the one program that I think I will prefer to support. Oh, it broke out here.
Mr. Marnell?
Yeah, I would like to see the Veterans Memorial Trip increased. Let's face it, the people that are old, World War II veterans here, most of them are ninety, this isn't, we know this isn't gonna last, we're not gonna keep them forever. And if we could increase that, so anybody that was a World War II veteran that is usually, by now is kind of poor health and everything else, funded enough so that they wouldn't be able to go with five hundred dollars, two, three years, we know of, the majority of them, that are left or could not be able to travel.
Thank you, Mike, Mr. Moore?
If I'm looking at this correctly, Dan, we're talking about an increase of about forty. Thirty-nine thousand, five forty, five forty-five is the total increase for all the contract agents. That would result in less than a penny.
Yeah, it would take the tax rate down to three seventeen two eight, to which really just barely moves the bar. It takes the percentage from six point two to six point zero one. So that's one point. Really, this is negligible effect on the budget.
Yeah, the total increase would probably affect by a, I guess, a half. In terms of Mr. Marnell's comments, I would first certainly support an increase amount to the Veterans Memorial Trip. And as I understand it, that may continue on reinvest as time goes on. I guess if we were gonna pick and choose through this whole list and really make a big fool for it over nothing, I would question the Adirondack Regional Airport. And they really requested a whole lot over the years. And in my opinion, didn't provide very adequate explanation of why they wanted to go from, from, let me see?
Five thousand?
Five thousand, twenty-two fifteen to twenty-five thousand. Again, I guess my point is we could go through this, it's not a lot of time, but wait, wait, we're not gonna affect the budget by more than a cent, so.
I just wanna, Mr. Connell, did you still have something?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Bidel on the veterans. The one I was gonna talk a little bit more about is Mr. Merrihue. Literacy volunteers, in my town, I have a couple of volunteers, and they're kinda hanging by a thread also. And I think that we get much back in terms of savings of taxpayers' money because of the work that literacy volunteers do with their clientele. Because many of these people that they're working with are able to then go into the workforce and be a more productive member of society because of the literacy volunteers. And for twenty-eight hundred dollars in that budget with those folks, that makes a difference.
Mr. Pallidi?
You know, this happens every year.
Yeah, I mean, for some semblance of order, just Randy made a motion that we keep it to two thousand and fifteen. Well, we should probably vote on that and then get to this other stuff, so that we don't have these amendments flying everywhere and we're not gonna be able to keep track of it. And I'm sorry, will we later, is that what you were gonna say?
Yeah.
I don't have any changes or amendments to be made, I just have an observation, it's this. We're working out a five-year plan here at DeKalb, and I won't be here next year to see it, whether it fails or not, but unless we start making some substantial cuts, it's bound to fail. That's my word.
Please. First of all, let's, Mr. Glouland? All right, let's take care of the resolutions on the floor. Mr. Preston moved to leave them all at two thousand and fifteen?
I got a point of order, I have a question. So if this resolution that has been presented is a pass, does that mean you can't go back on this list?
Sure. No, you could still go back on the list. What would happen is that if this resolution fails, you then would go back to.
If it fails, but if it passes.
If it passes, then what we would have to do is go back and do another resolution, chipping away at it. It's, I know it's, you make a good point, but it's just gonna be, unless you wanna make amendments to this two thousand and fifteen budget request. You wanna make these amendments now, we can, but if there are a lot of them, it's gonna really create a real.
I mean, I think the, you know, the two, the two issues that I can, from what I'm hearing, is literacy volunteers, which I do agree with, they are just hanging by a thread right now. And what they give back to this county, they actually help people become self-sufficient and get them off the public assistant roles and so on, and they do a lot for this county. And then the other is the Adirondack Regional Airport, other than that, I don't hear a whole lot of discussion on.
Well, I think you may, you may find some more support on the veterans flight.
In the veterans flight.
Yeah, if Mr. Preston wants him to have his resolution amended that says that you'll stick to the contract agencies for the two thousand, at the two thousand and fifteen levels, subject to these slight changes, you can do that. If not, we can vote on this one, and then you can do another one.
Well, I, a point of order again. The motion that Mr. Preston put on the floor is what we're discussing. His motion was to adopt this, and some of us have some questions whether or not we wanna adopt this, so I think we are.
So you're gonna be offering amendments to that resolution?
Well, is that what we're doing? I mean, I'll offer an amendment if that's the only way I can, so I'll offer an amendment to leave the literacy volunteers at twenty-eight hundred and to increase the Veterans Memorial Trip by a thousand, if that's what I need to do to discuss these.
All right, all right, so this a thousand will be a total of a thousand, or it'll be fifteen, a thousand additional?
Total of a thousand.
So that'd be, okay.
Okay, first I need a second on Mr. Preston's second.
No, no, no.
You're seconding Mr. Connell's amendment.
Amendment.
That's the way we're gonna do it. So we need a second to his amendment.
We're seconding Mr. Connell's amendment. We're seconding Mr. Moore.
Mr. Merrihue. Okay, any discussion on the amendment?
Discussion on the amendment.
Mr. Moore?
Discussing those amendments or another amendment?
Right now, you're just doing those two, you're amending two lines.
I've got one.
Well, if there's another one you wanna throw in, do you think we can get it all in one fell swoop?
I do have one.
Okay.
I would take the regional airport back to seventy, fifty-two fifteen.
That's okay with me, I'll move the amendment.
Seventy-two hundred? Seventy-two hundred? No, fifty-two fifteen was the last, was the two thousand and fifteen approved. That's what the. That's what the amendment. That's what, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll take that back then and, just being supportive, Dan Connell, so.
Okay, so, so right now, we're amending two lines. The literacy volunteers, the Veterans Memorial Trip.
And the Veterans Memorial, which you are increasing to a thousand, and you're leaving literacy at twenty-eight hundred.
Why don't we vote?
And we're putting out Adirondack Airport packet five.
That's already there, that's in the original resolution. Okay, so let's do those two and get those out of the way.
Okay, so we'll vote on the amendment.
Vote on the amendment. We have a mover and we have a second. All favor? All favor, I?
I.
Oppose? Please propose.
Okay, so the amendment. Okay, so the amendment passes. So now we have Mr. Preston's motion to stick to the 2015 levels, with the exception of Veterans Memorial, which will be increased 500 dollars, and literacy volunteers, which will have a $2,800 increase, I guess.
Linda just pointed out that I messed up. Literacy volunteers is in for 10,000, so I don't need to increase it to 10.
Would that change, is it just the 2015?
He took it out. Okay, I'm putting it back in.
So it's going in for 10,000?
Dan, again, it's going in for 10,000? Linda, Dan?
Yeah, it's called.
Their motion and their amendment was correct, that's what they are. Okay, just need to vote.
Duly noted. So the amendment has been voted on. So, all right, we'll just throw that as a 10,000.
Then it's going to be 10,000.
So now, we need to go back to Mr. Preston's... Right. Got a roll call vote on staying at the 15, 2015 level, subject to these two changes. With the two changes. Mr. Preston, move that. I have a second. Mr. Moore, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
No.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
No.
Mr. Poiti?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
No.
Mr. Woodson?
No.
Mr. Granell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glouland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
I think it has. So which one? Is it on, is it on that, or is it on there? Yes. Wrong, yeah, that's a question. Might be, if it's wrong. Yes, what's wrong? Thirty-six, just made it. Yeah, I got, I got guesses on one. It was a resolution.
I have those at 1485.
I do the answers, but it's...
Okay.
My vote is out. Seventy-two hundred, one strong, eight. We're at 200. My family's thinking, is this a question? Yeah. You need 4200. Oh, yes, it does. I think, I mean, just, there's ten, I don't know, he adds up.
Resolution is defeated. 1436, yes. 1485, no.
Okay, so can we try this? Let's just go down through them one at a time. I mean, ten of them are already at 2015 levels. I'm assuming that you would not change those. They didn't request anything different, though. So brass is at 2015 levels. North Country Lifeflight requested 500 additional. I guess I'm looking for a resolution to either approve that 500, or some other amount, or approve at 2015 levels.
I have a mover to move, Mr. Maryhill, seconded by Mr. Woodson.
Set the level.
That is correct.
You're accepting the additional 500, so the resolution for North Country Lifeflight would be to increase the 2015 funding by $500 from 4,500 to 5,000. That's the resolution on the floor.
I have a mover, and I have a second. We're going to do a resolution for each one of these, so I gotta do 25,000 of those things. You know, these are starting out as individual resolutions. It'd be easier just to do a resolution.
Well, ten of them won't need to be changed.
There won't be. We want roll call vote, please. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a movement on the floor, a second, to grant North Country Lifeflight their request. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
No.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
No.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
No.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Poiti?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Granell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glouland?
No.
That's a no. Preston, Mr. Preston?
No.
Ten requests. I'm sorry. I need to take it on the house. Mr. Marnell?
Just a question. If someone uses Lifeflight, does this build?
I don't believe so.
No, no.
No. But to go in ambulance for transport to Gunsmoke Hospital is 1,200 bucks. Saves lives.
And then Depot, where they have some...
Resolution carries.
Okay. So North Country Lifeflight is increased by 500. High Conroga Airport did not request anything. It was recommended at zero. Does anybody want to change that?
Anybody?
Adirondack Regional Airport has a request of 19,785 over the 5,215 that was budgeted in 2015. Is there a resolution?
I would like to go to 7200, the 2012 approved number.
Okay, so there's a second to that.
It provides tremendous economic benefit to Northern...
It's moved by Mr. Glou.
Well, Mr. Poiti.
Mr. Poiti moved it, Mr. Glou has seconded.
So that would be for 7200.
Discussion.
Roll call vote, please. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on that?
Is this for Adirondack?
Ding, no, no, Mr. Woodson.
When you say 7200, that's over and above the 5,215 that they're getting out, or that is the total loss?
That's the total loss.
It becomes the same as it was in 2012.
Now, roll call, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
No.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
No.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Poiti?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Granell?
No.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Granell?
No.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glouland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
No.
Yeah. Instead of 19,000... Resolution carries. So that means the Adirondack Regional Airport becomes 7200. Adirondack Film Institute did not require any change. It's at the same level. Is there anybody who wants to move anything?
Just a question. What, originally, wasn't that for the transition going to, from film to digital, and that was the reason we initially had funded that?
No, that's a different issue. The digital was a different issue for small movie houses and theaters. The Film Institute actually puts on live shows, those kinds of things. So the Arts Council requested an increase of 4,100. They were at 14,400. They requested 18,500. Is there anybody that cares to move, change to that?
Mr. Marnell?
I would move it. We increase it, as per their request.
Okay, so, so Arts Council, the motion would be to increase them by 4,100 based upon their request or key buys from the approved of 14,400.
It's moved by Mr. Marnell.
Is there... No, go ahead.
If you've been wrong.
No, no, I got, I'm more of a stuck-in-my-ear.
I was, oh.
Looking for seconds.
No. Moved out for a second, is that the increase?
Um, yes.
Second for the increase on the Arts Council. Is that, so there's no change in that? There was a change of 4,100.
Yeah, there would be an increase of 4,100. Is there, was there a second? Mr. Harrington moved the second.
I don't know what we can do these all at once, if there are ones that aren't going to change.
Dan, wasn't that the 2016 recommended?
No, this one was to change. This one was, Arts Council was an increase from 14,400...
Oh, okay.
To 18,500, which was a 4,100 increase. We already stepped by Adirondack Film.
But it's only in this resolution as 18,500. Aren't we going to keep the ones that are already there and just do that in one big resolution and go?
No, these are the individual ones that, yes, that increased. We're only doing the ones that asked for an increase.
Okay.
So, I have a mover, I have a second on the Arts Council.
Discussion.
Roll call vote, please.
You have no discussion on that?
No discussion.
Okay. Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
No.
Mr. Gardner?
No.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Ferby?
No.
Mr. Blades?
No.
Mr. McNally?
No.
Mr. Skozavala?
No.
Mr. Cannon?
No.
Mr. Poiti?
No.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
No.
Mr. Granell?
No.
Mr. Connell?
No.
Mr. Glouland?
Epstein.
And Mr. Preston?
No.
The resolution is defeated.
Okay, now, just, just so you understand, okay, the resolution's defeated, so the recommended amount stays in there, which is 18,500. So someone, if they want something different, needs to move a resolution to change that to either the 14,400 or some other number.
What was the no for the increase?
That's not the way we voted.
That's not the way I voted. Yes, it is.
I voted for the increase.
What was Mr. Marnell's resolution then?
Increase.
Increase, that's why I voted no. Right.
I voted.
But it was in the recommended, at 18,500. So the only way to change it is by resolution of this board.
Mr. Preston, resolution, change it back to 14,400?
No. You got to vote it down.
That's the 15 approved?
So voting it down is stated.
Say that's the recommended level, because you haven't changed the recommended budget.
Mr. Moore?
I'd like to propose a resolution that reduces the Arts Council from 18,500 to 2,015 level of 14,400. That's the one that does it.
Yes. Oh, second. Yes.
Under discussion, I would like to review Mr. Preston's resolution. I was under the impression that by knocking out with amendments, that we were at 2,015 levels, and now we are in a fail.
Fail, though.
Fail, though. That was defeated, so we... I guess I wasn't paying attention. Thank you very much.
I'm all right. So we have a motion on the floor to reduce the Arts Council back to 2015. Correct? Will? Yes, yes.
But I don't have a second.
I don't have a second. I need a second. Mr. Cannon, further discussion on that reduction. Go for a discussion, roll call vote, please. Then again, it's to reduce the Arts Council back to the 2015.
Which is 14,400.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Maryhill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Ferby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Poiti?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Granell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Epstein.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Okay, so the next one was the Robert, the Robert Louis Stevenson, that was at the same amount, it did not change, it was zero. I'm assuming nobody wants to change it. Okay, so then the veterans...
I have a question.
Yeah?
They're still getting 900. What is it?
It's a little cabinet center.
It's a historical...
It's a historical?
It's about the historical site in San Antonio.
Okay.
Yes.
So the next...
North Alabama.
This is the Veterans Memorial Trip. This is the Veterans Memorial Trip, it was, it was requested at five hundred, um-
Actually Saint Armand.
It was recommended at five hundred, I know, there was some, there was a resolution to move it to a thousand, but that resolution failed within the first resolution.
We need to do another. Mr. Moore?
I would propose that we increase the Veterans Memorial Trip from five hundred dollars to one thousand dollars.
Second, Mr. McNally.
And just as a point of interest, I went to the dinner that they had fundraiser in Mindville Friday evening, and they are expanding that, um, also they're taking Korean veterans now, if they don't have enough for World War II, and they also are moving into Vietnam veterans, which is a good thing, so, I do support this.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Poiti?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glouand?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Okay, so that moves after five hundred to thousand. CEF Library requested an increase of one thousand sixty-eight dollars, um, from twenty-one thousand three sixty-six to twenty-two thousand four thirty. Now, just for a point of clarification, if you're gonna move a resolution, um, unless it's gonna be more than what we recommended, you don't need to do anything if it's gonna stay at the recommended level, but if you're gonna reduce it, that's when we need a resolution. So the, the requested amount is a thousand sixty-eight over the recommended, I mean, over the approved fifteen budget.
Mr. Marnell?
If you, if you want it to be as recommended in the two thousand and sixteen budget, then
you don't need to do anything, it automatically stays that way. We don't need a motion, anybody need, any other movers on that? If not, we'll go on.
I'd like to, but I'm not.
The Essex County Historical Society had a approved amount of twenty-three thousand four hundred, they requested eight thousand six hundred more, for a total of thirty-two thousand, that's what's in the recommended, um, if there's a resolution to either change or alter that.
Discussion, Mr. Preston?
I would make a motion that we reduce that to the twenty-fifteen level, twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars.
I have a second. Mr. Gardner, Mr. Blades, comments or questions?
What was the basis, children? Pardon? What was the basis stand for that increase?
Linda, what, why did they request the increase? I don't recall.
That was, um, that was the same thing she wrote in the letter, that because she was held at a, you know, she was cut in the last few years. It's not the other thing here, Rita.
It wasn't cut the last few years.
No, it's been the same since two thousand and twelve.
Yeah, 'cause it doesn't show their request.
Mr. Marnell?
Uh, every, for a few months, weeks, we get a report from the Director, and we, everybody's happy with it, and we say, "What a great job you're doing, and what a nice, uh, place to visit, and the programs you put on." Well, they need money to operate, so, I guess we should say cut back a little bit, don't get, be so rambunctious or something. But they're doing a good job, and I think they're being fair with the request, and I think it should be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Marnell. Linda's looking up there at the screen.
She doesn't-
Doesn't really give a-
If we got a resolution on the floor-
You do, you have a resolution to-
To reduce it back to-
Reduce it back to two thousand and fifteen level, which is twenty-three hundred, twenty-three thousand four hundred.
We have a mover, we have a second. Further discussion, any further discussions? Resolution is to reduce it back to the twenty-fifteen request, roll call vote please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
No.
Mr. Merryle?
No.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Fairby?
No.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
No.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Poiti?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
No.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
No.
Mr. Glouand?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes. So that carries, that doesn't it then?
Yeah.
That carries, so that reduces that back to two thousand and fifteen level of twenty-three thousand four hundred. Lake Stalox was at thirteen hundred and fifty, they requested a three thousand six hundred and fifty dollar increase, um, to five thousand. Oh, yes, okay, that's the one we just talked about.
Just gonna say, I think that, that, um, that was for program expansion.
She did talk about that.
She came to the public hearing.
Yeah.
That's why that number did increase.
Yeah.
Do we have a, Mr. Preston?
I'll make a motion that we reduce that request to the twenty-fifteen approved budget of thirteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Thirteen hundred and fifty, ready?
Yes.
I have a second for that. Mr. Cannon, comments or questions? Mr. Harrington?
Uh, Lake Stalox is the means by which the county promotes marine tourism in Champaign Valley. They've been working diligently at this and have become involved with matching grants as a result of that. That is why they asked Mr. Preston to approve this report.
Mr. Grinnell?
Uh, just to echo my colleague's statements, uh, these people, uh, absolutely, uh, promote one of the more natural resources of Essex County, uh, and, and I feel that they deserve the support of the county and this board.
Grinnell, Mr. Collins?
Yeah, uh, you know, those of us in the Lake Champlain Board, this is an important organization, and I would just echo what my two colleagues said, rather than remain in it, but it is, it is important for us to pull in tourists.
Please, for the comment?
Just as clarification, so, in this case, a no vote means it stays at the recommended level, a yes vote means it goes back to the thirteen fifty.
Clear.
A no vote means that it stays at the recommended level of five thousand, a yes vote means it goes back to the thirteen hundred and fifty, which was budgeted in two thousand and fifteen.
Further discussion, roll call vote please.
Mr. Morrow?
No.
Mr. Harrington?
No.
Mr. Merryle?
No.
Mr. Gardner?
No.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Fairby?
No.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
No.
Mr. Skozavala?
No.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Poiti?
No.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Marnell?
No.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
No.
Mr. Connell?
No.
Mr. Glouand?
No.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution is defeated.
Right, so based upon that, it stays at the five thousand recommended level. RSVP requested, um, a five hundred dollar increase, um, they were funded at eight thousand in two thousand and fifteen, um, their request is for five hundred additional, um, if no one cares to change that, then you don't need to do anything. If you wanna move it back to two thousand and fifteen level or some other number, you would have to move a resolution. Um, those are the volun-, I gotta tell you, this one, this is the volunteer drivers that spend a huge amount of time driving people around, um, they, the only thing that they get paid is mileage, um, they wear and tear on their vehicles, um, it's your volunteers. Um, I would recommend you leave it alone, but that's up to you guys. Based upon that, um, the Ag Society is at the same last year, the Ag Maintenance is the same as last year, the Essex County Fish and Game is at the same, the Canal Cooperative Extension is at the same level, the Adirondack Harvest is at the same level, Adirondack Soil and Water is at the same level, so you're down to the last one we talked about, which is Literacy Volunteers, that was approved, I mean, it was budgeted, it was budgeted at seventy-two hundred in two thousand and fifteen, they requested ten thousand for two thousand and sixteen, that's a two thousand eight hundred dollar increase. If you, if you did not want to do anything with this, that would automatically increase that, if you wanna get it back to two thousand and fifteen level, you would need a resolution to either alter or change that.
Anyone care to move that?
So, oh, God.
Mr. Marnell?
Mr. Marnell? What's the break?
You don't have to move it, I'm ready.
Okay.
So what you cut out is... All right, Linda, just check my number, make sure I'm right. I've got a thirty thousand dollar reduction total.
Yeah, my internet connection just went blank.
Aw, don't give me no excuses, come on, you, you can use a calculator.
Yeah, use my calculator.
I'm showing a, a thirty thousand dollar reduction to the two thousand and sixteen recommended, based upon the changes you just did.
Thirty thousand, you said?
Yeah.
Yes, thirty thousand.
All right, all right, so with that thirty thousand dollar change, you are now at, your tax levy is at six point zero five percent, and your tax rate is at three dollars and seventeen cents, seventeen four three. Um, so if those were, those are based upon those changes, the contract agency changes, the tractor, the hundred and eighty thousand on the radio, and the retirement adjustment of a hundred and forty-four six sixty-seven, that's a total reduction of three eighty-nine six sixty-seven, so that, again, brings that tax rate, um, increase, um, from the eight percent down to six point zero five, and the tax rate drops by, from three twenty-three to three seventeen.
Mr. Please?
I'll make a motion, we approve of the budget as so modified.
We're gonna do these one at a time in terms of those, um, that will get you there.
Can I, we've just gone down this list, right?
Yeah.
And we've, uh, have resolutions that have amended what you had as a recommended budget.
Right.
So we should pass a resolution that exclusively goes, the remaining ones are accepted.
Yeah.
Resolution of the-
I mean, it's in the, you already passed the resolution, accepted and tentative, they're already in-
Is this in the tentative?
Yeah, it was recommended, we're in the tentative.
All right, okay.
Yep.
All right, then we won't have to do anything on those, there'll be no resolution whatsoever. Mr. Glouand, do you have a question?
I was gonna second Mr. Blade, but-
So we need to do this one first, the one doing the, um, the retirement adjustment. And, and just so you, just so you, if you flip through those pages, um, just so you know why Linda and I and Dan tear our hair up on some of these, those, those are the requirements and pages to adjust the resolution for one change. But, again, this, that's why I, that's why I make Linda do it.
So we're at a resolution, jury?
Resolution amending the twenty sixteen tentative Essex County budget by decreasing appropriations in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred dollars, and decreasing, decreasing estimated revenues in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars due to a reduction in the retirement expenditures.
One, Mr. Moore, second one, Mr. Poiti, comments or questions?
Thank you.
Roll call vote please. Yep. Roll call vote, I think, comments or questions, do you think? Now, roll call vote please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Poiti?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Aye.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glouand?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries. The next, do we just go ahead and read them? The next one is amending the twenty sixteen tentative Essex County budget by decreasing appropriations in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars due to the elimination of a maintenance contract for microwave radio equipment.
One, Mr. Poiti, second one, Mr. Moore, and Mr. Glouand, comments or questions? Big non-roll call vote.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merryle?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Fairby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozavala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Poiti?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Glouand?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Skip over that one, guys.
Yeah. People are down to the document.
Okay.
Do we got those numbers, Linda?
Um, the tax levy at an increase of six point zero six.
Also, uh- They're not really as good, the tentative, the-
So, the tentative budget is already out for general compensation. Right. Okay, all right. So, Linda, you had that resolution printed, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm down to the, be a further resolved column, um-
The tax levy at an increase of six point zero six.
Adopted for the seller objects as forth and set two thousand and sixteen budget totally. That's the number I want.
Total appropriations?
Oh, two. Two, go. Yeah. Mr. Merryle, question?
I just wanna make sure this time I'm doing it at the, the right time. I, I would like to offer an amendment for the, the total budget, but I don't, I'm not sure if this is the right time to do it.
We'll wait till we get the number.
Let's wait till two thousand and sixteen.
Nobody's- If he's amending the budget-
Yeah, you gotta do it before we do this one.
That's, that's, that was my question.
Who?
Ready for that?
Still on, I'm sitting down.
As I would like, um, a, a consideration for the amendment to remove the additional appropriations for the raises for this body, for the Board of Supervisors, for the appropriation of the, whatever it was, three percent for our raises. I just believe that the message that we need to send, we have allocated raises for our employees, we have modified the union contract, we understand how sensitive it is out there for people, and I think it just sends the right message, how minimal it is, but it is a sign of good faith to say that we do not need those raises this year. We're trying to do our part also, as part of this five-year program, to keep the levy as, as low as we possibly can. We would be the ones to sacrifice, not the employees.
Do I have a second? Mr. Cannon, I'll say, Mr. Marnell, Mr. Skozavala?
Yeah, I think George would put the part left.
Comments or questions? If tomorrow-
Few times we voted on things we didn't understand. This is just to remove the supervisors' rates.
Right, right.
Okay, I don't have a, I don't have a problem.
Honestly, I did not expect it, so I didn't, I, Linda, I don't know if you have that number.
I know.
Just a reminder, and this is just my opinion, I'll go along with this resolution, but I just have to say out there that, you know, our expenses, our health insurance goes up like everyone else, and, again, you know, we're, we're cutting supervisors, uh, it does look good, does look good on paper, but again, we all do have increased expenses like everyone else. Mr. Glouand?
I, you know, I, it's, it's a noble sacrifice, but let's, let's look around at us, I, I don't see, you know, I guess we may have a thirty or thirty-something in our next one, but, you know, we're all getting old, and a lot of us are already on retirements, or several retirements, and we can afford to do this, but when we age out, who's coming in? It's the people who've got one job, or maybe two jobs with a working out spouse, and they got two or three kids they're trying to put in, that's the, that's the target of the person you want sitting in your seat right now, 'cause we're not doing a real good job bringing up the farm team. You know, we're a bunch of old men, and we don't want more old men, we want the future of this county, and if we don't actually invest in that for the future, you know, what, what's, what's the point? That's my feeling.
Thank you. Mr. Glouand?
And reiterating, one, Mr. Glouand, I just said, I wonder from time to time how I would
survive if I had this as my only income, and I'm afraid everyone would have to be asking the same question, how would you survive?
You know, I'm gonna oppose this resolution, if we were talking a hundred thousand dollars and a three percent of that, you're, you're, what do we talk at here, peanuts, uh, just a small amount of money, and if you don't keep pace, uh, now, or somewhere along the line, then, then you're gonna fall behind, and I don't think we should do that, so I I don't see, you know, I guess we may have a 30 or 30-something or an X1, but, you know, we're all getting old, and a lot of us are already on retirements, or several retirements, and we can afford to do this. But when we age out, who's coming in? It's the key people who've got one job, or maybe two jobs with a working out spouse, and they got two or three kids they're trying to put in. That's the, that's the target of the person you want sitting in your seat right now. Because we're not doing a real good job bringing up the farm team. You know, we're a bunch of old men, and we don't want more old men. We want the future of this county. And if we don't actually invest in that for the future, you know, what, what's, what's the point? That's my feeling.
Mr. Plead? Mr. Harrington?
And reiterating on what Mr. Gloulin has just said, I wonder from time to time how I would survive if I had this as my only income, and I am afraid every one of you would have to be asking the same question, how would you survive?
You know, I'm gonna oppose this resolution. If we were talking $100,000 and a 3% of that, you're, you're, what are we talking here? Just a small amount of money. And if you don't keep pace, now, or somewhere along the line, then, then you're gonna fall behind, and I don't think we should do that, so I will oppose that resolution.
This is Skozbala?
Yeah, I mean, I've survived at this almost 30 years, and I'm very seldom, in those years, maybe taken two, three raises from the town, which weren't significant. You know, how do I survive? My wife did work at one time, I have an electrical business, so I work a lot of hours, and I work a lot of days. Here's the bottom line, you're looking at a 6% increase, yet we're gonna sit here and vote ourselves raises? I mean, I just don't, I, I agree with Mr. Merrihill, I think the perception out there in regards to being a bunch of old men here, you know, I'm 58 years old, I guess maybe I'm old, some organs, I feel very old. You know, this is a situation where you're damned if you do and damned if you don't, but the bottom line is this, we go out and knock on doors and ask for this position. We try to get elected at this position, and when we run, we all know what the pay scale is.
That's correct, Mr. Skozbala, but along that same line, when employees accept a job with Essex County, they know what the pay is, but yet they still expect to be an increase.
I think comparing a employee to an elected position is like comparing apples and oranges.
I think you need to compare, then, the supervisors on this board that do not have an electrical business, or do not have additional business in our.
Then they shouldn't have ran, they should, they should have chose, they should have chosen another career then. If they can't afford to be on the board of supervisors, then don't be here.
Let me finish, I don't wanna interrupt you. But as Mr. Gloulin said, to try to attract younger people to fill our positions, the pay has to be in line for a decent or acceptable living. Not everyone coming on board is gonna have a secondary or a third, or be retired from one or two jobs. So with that, I'm gonna oppose that resolution.
Yeah, you and Mr. Gloulin said basically what I would say in charge. We really limit the pool of who can afford to run for these positions, and I've said that over here many, many times before. Now I'm go, I'm not gonna be here, so this isn't going to affect me. But I think we do a discourtesy to people who would really like to get involved in politics, but can't do it because they have a family to support, and it's, and we're never gonna get this up to a salary when you, but at least we can get it up some, so additional people can look at this job. And we should have some younger people sitting on this board, and most younger people just cannot afford to do it.
Yeah, I can counter that, and what we should do, if we're really sincere about trying to get younger people with families on this board, is start meeting at night, like most legislative bodies do. Then they could hold a day job and attend their meetings there in the evening.
Okay, we'll call the, we have a resolution on the floor, we have a mover in a second. And the move, the resolution is to not include the board of supervisors within the 3% raise.
Within the 3% raise.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just, so a yes vote, the raises are out, a no vote, the raises are in. Just so we're all on the same page here, right? Okay, thank you.
Roll call vote please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
No.
Mr. Merrihill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
No.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Farby?
No.
Mr. Blades?
Affirmative.
Mr. McNally?
No.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
No.
Mr. Pleady?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Murnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
No.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
No.
Mr. Gloulin?
No.
Mr. Preston?
No.
This morning, yeah, just a comment, we have to take about people who serve on school boards, they've done a lot of meetings.
More?
They have to have training, and they get paid nothing, but they do it because they feel a certain duty, so.
Alright, so resolution was defeated. Linda, here, are we, where are we on the numbers?
So we want the total appropriations?
Yeah, that's what it's like, that's the number you're looking for in there, right? And? Totalling appropriations.
Yeah, the total number.
Total appropriations, total revenues.
Total appropriations, $96,544,860, which is a 4.19% increase.
And then the revenues?
Total revenues are $73,233,599, which is up 3.58%.
And then how much are we appropriating from the fund balance? Two million, two million what? And then, the amount raised on the levy?
$21,277,114, which is 6.06%.
6.06%, okay. Which adds, which equates $3.17 per thousand.
Pardon me? Move by Mr. Plead, second by Mr. Moore, Mr. Merrihill, Mr. Cannon. Comments or questions? Further comments or questions?
Dan, for clarification, for, I've been asked by a number of my constituents regarding the EMS position, that there seems to be a lot of confusion out there, that the salary for that position is $92,000 per year. And that's, that's what the benefits included, obviously, and then, what's happening with the office for the aging director's position?
The office for the aging would then be moved under the public health department. A new division would be created with a director of patient, or director of aging services would be filled, and there would really be no change to the services provided for aging. The only difference is, instead of having an office for the aging director, we would have a director of aging services overseen by the public health director.
Alright, okay.
And again, that salary that Patty moved into the EMS position is approximately 6,000 less than she's making now as an office for the aging director. It's not an increase, obviously, the 92,000 reflected health insurance, retirement, SICA, all those numbers.
So what is the salary?
I think, I don't, I think I actually have it.
Linda, you had that number, right? $60,700? Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Merrihill?
And not to put the manager on the spot, we, we talked earlier before the meeting, I just asked him again to clarify that the 3% raises that we're about to, okay, right now, do include the deputies and the correctional officers. There was some rumor out there, because of the change in bargaining units, that they were not actually part of that. Now I would ask Dan to.
Yeah, the actual paperwork that separates that union has gone down the curb, it has not been returned to us as of yet, so technically, they still are a unit within the regular unit until such time as we receive that from her, I don't know when that'll occur, whether it'll occur during the month of December or not. Dan and I had this discussion, the, in terms of extending the, the benefits that are associated with the new agreement to that unit until such time as we can reach a new agreement. So it would be an extension of time until we reach agreement with the sheriff's department.
Any further questions?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
No.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Murnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Gloulin?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
No.
The resolution carries.
Mr. Skozbala?
I'd like to move a resolution with Mr. Moore in appreciation and recognition of our outgoing supervisors, Mr. Cannon, Mr. Connell.
Sorry, Doc, can we just wait one more, 'cause we got one more to do with the budget?
I'm sorry.
Or we keep those in order?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, the other one, more, the other one is the.
Resolution levying the 2016 county and town taxes and assessments, approving the completed tax rolls, and directing the execution and delivery of the tax warrants.
Move by Mr. Skozbala. Second, Mr. Plead. Comments or questions?
What about those?
Those numbers would be the ones transposed over, right?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're the same numbers, they just get transposed from one resolution to the other.
Roll call vote please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihill?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Depot is excused, Mr. Farby?
Yes.
Mr. Blades?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Murnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Grinnell?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Gloulin?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Okay, Mr. Skozbala.
I'd like to offer a resolution of appreciation for the years of service to Mr. Cannon, Mr. Connell, Mr. Grinnell, and myself.
Yeah, that was supposed to be Mr. Blades.
And Mr. Blades, I'm sorry, this, I knew I was forgetting someone.
Mr. Blades. Mr. Lewis.[1729.43]